All right, we are ready to rock. Good morning, everybody. My name is Greg Reidman. I'm president of the Charles River Regional Chamber and delighted to welcome you today to our debate between the four candidates, three candidates running in Ward for for the at-large seat, Josh Crinsman, John Chamanis, and Cyrus Damoupin. To remind everybody that is watching this, this will be a one-hour debate conversation with the candidates. We are recording it so you can share it with others later and relive your favorite moments. We will, I've encouraged the candidates to, you know, join in the conversation, have a conversation. I reserve the right to interrupt them either in the interest of time or clarity or just to try to balance out how much time I think we need for each question. At the conclusion of the hour, we'll ask all the candidates one question that they know about in advance, which is to tell us about that one moment in history that they would like to go back and observe for a day. They can't make any changes, but they can watch and see that moment in history. So I'll ask them that, and then they will get a 90-second final time opportunity to make closing statements. So, um, so welcome candidates. Thanks so much for doing this and to our audience. This is an interesting contest. There are three candidates for two seats. So one of the three people you see here will be voted off the island, but the other two will prevail and be on the city council, including Josh, who is incumbent, and Cyrus and John, who are both challengers for a seat that has been held for, it feels like generations by Lenny Gentile. So interesting time. So I want to start with a kind of warm-up question and which is just tell us what your current, since this is a business conversation and a lot of the issues we're going to focus on today are business and economy. Tell us what your current day job is and what your most recent prior job was. And Cyrus, why don't we start with you?
Sure. Thanks, Greg, for the question and thanks, everyone, for being here to listen in. So I actually left my last job, which was as the Director of Research and an associate at a architecture and urban design and planning firm in downtown Boston. I left it in March after having been there for about seven years and just with the goal of starting my own small architecture and urban design practice, which is off to a good start because all things considered that I'm, you know, also running for running this campaign.
The firm you worked for currently?
Yeah, the firm that I worked for is called, is called UTIL. I don't work there anymore. And my practice has, we've completed, I've completed my first small project, which was a new office space for the Boston Children's Chorus, and I'm really proud to have had that happen.
John, welcome. Same question. Current job and prior job?
Thanks, Greg. Thanks to you guys, the chamber for hosting, and also to Cyrus and Josh. Really enjoyed the conversations with you guys, and no matter how this goes, I look forward to staying in touch with you both going forward. So I currently run a clean energy company that I started over a decade ago. We're a nationwide company of about a dozen employees, and we own and operate distributed scale solar projects, so sort of medium-sized solar projects in the back of a farm or on a landfill in underutilized spaces. We've produced enough power to offset the equivalent of 25,000 homes. That's nearly all of Newton. So we're a smaller, medium-sized organization. Prior to this, I was involved in starting another venture. I ultimately started this venture. And prior to that, I worked for a larger energy company that was doing similar type of work.
Very good. And Josh?
Thanks, Greg. And again, thank you to the chamber for hosting this debate. Thank you, Cyrus and John, for being here and for accommodating. We canceled the first go-around of this, and that was my fault, so I apologize to everyone for the scheduling difficulties, but I'm glad we're all here now. So I am the Director of Government Affairs for Boston Medical Center Health System. I do most of my work on the health plan side of business, a company called WellSense Health Plan. That means that I do state and federal government relations on behalf of a company that largely serves the Medicaid, some Medicare population as well, and some ACA Obamacare members. So I do government affairs in Boston, in Concord, New Hampshire, and in Washington, DC. Prior to that, I actually did government affairs for another healthcare company. And prior to that, I worked for the Massachusetts Senate, where I spent about 12, a little over 12 years with the Massachusetts Senate. The last six or so years, I was deputy counsel for the Massachusetts Senate.
Thank you very much. And all three of you plan to continue your work when you're, if you're on the city council, right? And I think that's noteworthy to everybody because we do have, have had and do have city councils who are just full-time city councils, even though it's not full-time pay by any stretch of the imagination. All right, let's talk a little bit.
No, but I wouldn't be opposed to it being full-time pay, even as a part-time gig, just to be clear.
I'm glad you feel that way. Controversial, but I'm glad you feel that way. All right. So let's talk about small businesses, and then we'll talk about large businesses. And I'll start, John, with you this time. How would you help our small brick-and-mortar businesses kind of continue to thrive or to thrive and attract new ones here as well?
Look, as a, as a business owner myself, I know what it takes to start a business. It is a very long journey, and generally speaking, you're investing substantial amounts of time and money to just get things off the ground. In a brick-and-mortar business, you're also investing in inventory. So you're putting all of your wealth into those buckets. In Newton, I think we could do a much better job of supporting these local businesses. The Economic Development Commission, we have one person on staff at the city right now that works in economic development. That is the engine of our business. Every business knows that business development is, is the engine. That is the sales engine. We need to be creating policies that allow quicker permitting and quicker opening for local businesses. We need to be doing a better job of supporting and getting the message out. Laura Berman runs a group called All Over Newton. That organization is, she runs it herself. She's an individual. The city should be running an organization like that that promotes and provides advertising that's covered by the city in order to spread the message about local businesses. And finally, I think we could do some work with, with working with local banks to create runways or sort of short-term loans and support structures for our local businesses. We should be attracting the type of businesses that we want, and then we should be supporting them as they get started.
Great. Thank you. Josh, same question for you. How will you help our brick-and-mortar businesses?
Thanks, Greg. Yeah, I think I'm concerned by the number of empty storefronts that we see and the movement away from some of our commercial spaces, especially towards housing. We need a lot of housing. Housing is fantastic, but we're actually eliminating some of the commercial space in the city, and I'd rather see us expanding our commercial opportunities, especially in conjunction with housing opportunities. So, you know, mixed-use developments in and around our village centers, I think, are fantastic. I think there are sort of three things, okay? One, and you know this better than anyone, Greg, but when we ask businesses, what do you need? The number one thing we hear is people. We need, we need homes for people to patronize our businesses, and we need homes for our employees. So I think housing policy is support for our local businesses. Number two, to streamline the process and make it easier for businesses to open, we can do that through our zoning policies. Our zoning policies, which allow commercial tenants to open a business by right, makes it easier for them to open. And then lastly, I want to mention parking. I'm sure we'll get more and more into parking as we talk about this, but I think we have some nonsensical policies in the city that make it difficult for business to open by requiring them to construct parking that we, as a city, apparently believe that they need without asking them what their parking requirements are, what they believe they need to support their business.
Great. Thank you. Cyrus, same question?
Thanks. Yeah. So I think the first thing that we need to do, and I'm kind of, in my mind, I have one specific recent closure, which is out of Lavender Cafe in West Newton, and the story that they were able to tell about how difficult it was to get, just to get the doors open. So I really think that we need a playbook that makes it really clear how do small businesses go through the process of getting open and getting, you know, patrons and dollars through the door. I think then we also need to be supporting them in additional ways with a similar kind of playbook that says, okay, you need to make a small change to your building. You need to do, you know, an interior renovation. Here's how that process works. We make it really clear. The city of Boston does this with like fairly straightforward diagrams that are available on their website of this, this form, then this form, then this form. I also think I've put forward an idea for a small business preservation plan that would work with, you know, potential change in our village centers to be able to ensure that these small businesses are able to survive and thrive in our village centers, return to those communities when construction is done, and even comes up with a place for them to be during construction. And I was actually really happy to see in the chamber's email yesterday the story about how when the Pike was brought through Newton Corner, the chamber was the one that stepped in and was able to provide a way for a database to exist for people to be, for companies and businesses to be able to find places to go. So I think, you know, greater partnership with the chamber and with the city would be really helpful in advocating for our small businesses that way.
So that was 1910, probably not a database, probably.
Sure. A ledger or something.
So Josh mentioned housing, which we're going to get to in a minute, but also parking. So let's talk about that. Right before the city council right now is a proposal to eliminate the parking mandate for our village centers and make some other changes to parking. John, any thoughts about the parking solutions, and you support that idea?
Yeah. So I think the, the policy is an overnight parking ban. I don't know that necessarily particular to the village centers, but the overnight parking ban is the proposal, and it is a citywide elimination of the overnight parking ban.
I'm more talking about the permitting requirements. I'll let Josh explain it to you.
If you want to talk about, okay, so if you were particularly speaking about, yep, the parking requirements. I think, I think businesses, parking is one of the biggest issues that people talk about when I've spoken to them on the street about, you know, well, I used to shop in Newton, but I can't find a parking spot, so I go somewhere else. I hear that time and time again. So when businesses are opening, they have some requirements that have a certain number of spaces. But I think making that more flexible is important, and I think we need to be more thoughtful in planning, particularly in our zoning, and allowing that to occur for commercial buildings when they're going in to allow, you know, to make it more flexible for them to have more parking.
So Josh, you want to explain what you're pushing for, and then we can let Cyrus and John react to that.
So, you know, I've been pushing for elimination of mandatory parking requirements in many of our business zones, many of our commercial zones, also in the MRT zone. But in particular, I'm pushing for elimination of parking requirements in the VCOD for certain business uses. And so the VCOD, as folks know, is the Village Center Overlay District. And that is in and around our commercial centers where we are allowing certain commercial development by right, and we are allowing certain multi-use development by right. I think we made wise policy choices to put the VCOD in many places across the city. I think it was in part a result of very wise state policy about housing growth and putting that housing in and around, again, commercial centers and transportation hubs. So the principle here is that I think businesses ought to be able to determine how much parking they need for their business in a particular location. I don't think that we should stand in the way of the businesses constructing parking that they need, but I think when the city tells a commercial tenant how much parking they have to construct, what we do is then put those costs on the commercial tenant and make the enterprise that much more costly and that much more difficult to open, as opposed to, again, allowing them to choose, this is what I need for my business. This is what I need.
I'm going to stop you there. Cyrus, what do you think about that idea of letting the businesses determine how much parking they need rather than having a government mandate for it?
I agree with it. I think that Josh is spot on here, and I also think that, you know, one of the, the points that matters about it is that currently what happens is these businesses ask for variances that go through a long process to not have to be, to not have to build the parking that, that otherwise would be required. And that's a, that's, that uses up city resources to review those and to ultimately grant them. It uses up business, you know, their resources in terms of lawyers and time and all that kind of thing. So I think it's a good idea.
And Cyrus, I mean, John, sorry.
Sure. Yeah. So I think Josh makes a really great point about that, and I think we all agree that, you know, a business can make its determination on that. I think I just want to understand the little wrinkle about, you know, to the extent it's in a multi-use zone, the residential should have parking associated with it. I think that's, that adds, that's an important component of it. So, you know, understanding and bifurcating the commercial from the residential in the planning is, is important there.
I'm actually hopeful that, including in the MRT, the multi-residential district, that we don't mandate parking. I think we lowered our parking requirement for the MRT from what traditionally we require for, you know, single-family homes or homes. But I would actually like to eliminate it there as well because my hope is that, again, developers construct parking if they wanted, or we can actually incentivize individuals to move into town without reliance on an automobile, especially if they're in and around transportation hubs.
Maybe a slight difference of opinion there. Respectfully, I think that with housing, you probably should have some planned parking.
Cyrus, thoughts about whether you require parking with housing?
Yeah, I think in our village center districts, I, you know, similar to Josh, this idea that you're right next to a train station in these VCOD areas and that you're, you have easy access to the commuter rail, the green line, buses, biking options, walking options. You've got many things nearby, so I think it makes sense to not necessarily have to have a parking minimum there that ultimately also just increases the cost of those units to renters or owners.
Yeah. And again, I just, I want to be clear. I'm not opposed to homes having parking. I think that's great. I just don't want to tell the homeowner how much parking they have to construct and how much they need to build in order to come into our district. So again, with these, with these locations being near transportation hubs, near commercial village centers where they can walk and do their errands, where they can walk to a train station, I don't think we need to tell them to construct, you know, two units of parking.
So Josh, what, what do you say to those folks who say that then their neighborhood will be overrun by how it's street, street parking, if there's a, if there's a project in your neighborhood or adjacent to your neighborhood?
I think parking, as I know we're going to talk about more, is a very hyper-localized issue. And we do have the traffic council that works through parking plans. We have a number of village parking plans. We have a number of resident parking areas, and I think we need to work with very different parts of the city to come up with the parking plans that make sense for that neighborhood. For example, I'm going to be working with Lower Falls. We've already done a lot of work on it, but I live in Lower Falls. We are hopeful to come up with a smart parking plan if and when the Riverside Development gets constructed so that we can protect the neighborhood and make sure that the neighbors have the parking plan that makes sense for Lower Falls to manage any traffic and/or overflow parking from the Riverside Development.
Cyrus or John, want anything quickly before we move on?
I would agree with Josh. I think we see that very similarly.
Okay. So let's talk about housing. So the governor says that Massachusetts needs 220,000 new homes in Massachusetts by 2035. My question is, what's Newton's responsibility? Well, first, if you disagree with that number, let me know if you disagree with, with the governor's number. But what's Newton's responsibility to the housing crisis? And I will start with you, Cyrus.
Yeah, I think Newton's responsibility to the housing crisis is that, you know, we are in a situation where our 2016 housing report made it very clear that if we don't do something, Newton is going to be livable only for the wealthiest people. And, and that's a serious issue. At 32 years old, I know that none of the kids that I grew up with still can afford to live here. The other part of this, I think, is that the MBTA Communities Act put us into as one piece of a regional solution. And that solution only works if each community that it impacts and affects is going to step up and do the part that they have, you know, been, been tasked with doing. The other part of it is that our, the MBTA Communities Act does not require us to build anything, but it does require us to create, make the possibility for things to be built. And so I think, you know, we are, we are obligated to, to complete, to make that possible, and we have done that with our MBTA Communities Act, and I would like to see us make sure that what we have made possible actually starts to come to fruition.
Josh, your thoughts about what the Newton's responsibility is towards the state housing crisis?
Yeah. Well, I, I don't have an opinion on the number. I believe the governor, you know, she could have said 221,000. I would have believed it too. She could have said 218,000. I just, I'm going to believe, you know, the experts who have studied this, so that's fine. In terms of our responsibility, we have a critical role in that process. I mean, as a, as a key suburb of the Boston metropolitan area, we have a big role to play, both in creating housing for folks who want to live and work in Newton, but also folks who want to, you know, work in Boston and folks who want to work in the, you know, 95 corridor, right? We should be a hub for those people, and we should have the opportunities for people at various income levels to live in Newton. So I am supportive of the fact that we have done a lot to create additional housing opportunities, including, you know, the Riverside Development, the Austin Street Development, development all around the city, I think is probably a very good thing. I want to mention that the VCOD was a big step towards that. Now, I was supportive of the VCOD. I also, I will say, supported limiting the VCOD in its initial application to, you know, about half of our village centers because I think you also have to be reasonable. And when the people demonstrated that they were sort of opposed to this and not yet ready for VCOD across the whole city, I thought, that's okay. Let's listen to them. Let's show them how this works, and then hopefully in the future, we can expand it if it is as successful as I hope that it will be.
So we're now a couple of years past that. Do we know enough to, like, be talking about upzoning our other villages?
Well, I can say that the fears about the city being overrun with 8,000 units of housing immediately have not come to fruition, but we are starting to see projects being proposed. We have seen, you know, a couple approval, a modest, modest number of housing units that have actually been constructed. But we're starting to see some proposals. The city council, I think, just took one up the other day. Proposals coming forward, taking advantage of the VCOD. So, you know, again, I thought it would be a modest way to introduce more housing and more mixed-use development into the, into the flow, and I think that's what we're seeing.
John, I want to go back to that question. What's Newton's responsibility to the state housing crisis?
Yeah. So anytime, you know, a sort of statement comes out, I'm always going to ask the question, why? Why? What is, is there a housing crisis? What does it mean, right? So, you know, we asked, is 20,000 the right number? That's a fair question. I think you asked, I don't have the answer to that. I don't know what the data is based upon, what that actually will do, what it will solve for. What I, what I do know is that in, in Newton and, you know, across, we do have an affordability challenge. Prices have gone up, and I do know that prices have gone up for a couple of reasons. Number one, particularly in Newton, we can talk about Newton, it's a very desirable place. Both our location, we're safe, and we've got great schools, and those are really important to maintain. Safety and great schools are really important to maintain and shouldn't be taken for granted. Inside of that, I could tell you that we have approved outside of the MBTA Zonings Act, an increase of 11%. So we have about 33,000 units. We've increased over 1,000 in about, period of about five years. Those include a number of very large buildings. In those large buildings, they are largely rental buildings, and they are largely high-rent buildings. So we have not necessarily created the stock of affordability. Now, there is some affordability that's come with it. Where I'm focused on is true affordability. We really want to talk about affordability. How do we achieve true affordability? In true affordability, the way we do that is to protect the naturally occurring houses and protect them from being torn down because what we're seeing, again, this is from feedback from residents all over town, right? Oaklery is a great example where, you know, there's like three standing houses that are left from the original development. They're coming down and they're being built, and they're, you know, $8 million, $800,000 house, million-dollar house being taken down, and then a 1.5, $2 million, $3 million house are going up in its place. That's not truly creating affordability. We're not achieving that end. So how can we do the affordability? What we can do is we can also work with nonprofit developers, true nonprofit developers that are in the business to make affordable housing in order to protect, in order to encourage what we're talking about here, which is good housing stock improvement and variety. We need a variety of stock. The last thing I'd say is, is smaller footprints is one of the ways that we can do this. And, you know, when you create a smaller footprint, your dollar per square foot doesn't change, but your dollar per square foot of a, of a 3,000 unit is going to cost 10 times more than a 1,000-square-foot unit. And I can tell you that my first house was a condo in Watertown. It was an 800-square-foot condo that I can afford. It was the same dollar per square foot as everywhere else, but it was cheaper. And when we look at that, the housing affordability and the option for ownership are some of the ways that I think we can do that. I think those are the ways I think about it, Greg.
Let me, let me ask you a specific question. I think there's a lot to unpack in what you just said.
Yeah.
If you hear what John and Cyrus think, but in the new TV debate, you had said that you didn't buy into the idea that supply and demand lowers housing costs. And in the new TV debate, they didn't give you enough time to explain why. So I would love to understand why because generally speaking, every economist, every housing expert says that supply, increasing supply does reduce the price of housing. Even when you build high-end housing, it reduces ultimately because people move into the more expensive housing, and in general, it reduces prices. So supply and demand, help me understand.
Well, I respect your point. You did say generally every economist says this. The city in 2016 hired a consultant, RFK. They did a report for the city of Newton, and in that report, they said it, and I quote, "The city will not be able to build its way to affordability. The imbalance of demand and supply is so great that the city could not physically accommodate the development needed to affect pricing in a substantial manner."
So that's where I'm getting, that's where. Stop right there to just clarify, though. If you do it statewide, it's true that just Newton itself only does, is the only one building housing, but if you do statewide, which is the goal of the governor's report, and that doesn't supply and demand ultimately lower the price of housing?
Oh, in, you know, in abstract, so what we're a little bit talking about is a supply-side economics solution. And so supply-side economics, we've seen at some levels. It talked about quite a bit, and it hasn't necessarily come to fruition. I think what you're talking about makes sense in a regard where you have no land constraints, and land is an important component of it, available land. You know, when you look at housing, the cost is both the structure and the underlying real estate. When you have unlimited real estate, for example, in the outskirts of, let's say, a place like Phoenix, Arizona, the outskirts of Phoenix, Arizona, you can continue to build more cheaply and bribe down the prices on the outskirts until that becomes the center of the metro, and then it's harder to reduce the cost. So I think we're maybe saying some of the same things, but I think the constraints inside of Newton, and that's what this report talks to, is, is the constraints inside of Newton. We've got finite geographic boundaries. We're sort of run out of land. So, which is why I say we can build, and I think there's good use in building. I think what we build, we need to build smaller, and that practically would make things more affordable.
All right. I want to hear what Cyrus has to say about this.
Yeah, sure. So, I mean, I think, I think I want to go back way early to something that John said, and I personally do not consider $800,000 or $900,000 affordable, especially when people are showing up with cash to buy those houses because the demand is so high. So that is, that is not affordable to me. That's maybe, like, maybe we would call that less expensive. I also want to touch on a couple of things. That 2016 housing report that John is referencing, we talked about it in the League of Women Voters debate, and you sent it to me, John, and I appreciated that.
I, I'm open to a conversation all the time with you. Yeah.
Yeah, exactly. And I appreciate that you sent it to me. And you, you know, you highlighted something that said, the more new housing that we build, the more expensive, or you, you said that the more new housing we build, the more expensive it's going to be.
Not exactly, but I can correct that. Go ahead. Say what you're saying.
Actually, sorry. That, I watched the debate. That is a quote. But.
Not true, but go ahead.
Okay, that's fine. I want to just also call out a couple of things that that 2016 housing report says. It says on the same page that you pointed me to, "Development patterns will need to change to accommodate anyone other than the wealthiest consumers." It also says, "A combination of preservation and new construction will be necessary to ensure some level of price diversity within Newton." It says, "A mix of moderate density, multi-unit development will need to be considered to accommodate additional households and allow for greater housing choice." So I, and it also says, "A do-nothing position by the city will see naturally occurring affordable housing diminish as pressure from the market will drive prices." Personally, I would take fault with only that word, naturally occurring affordable housing. We do not have naturally occurring affordable housing. We have naturally according, afford, occurring less expensive housing. So I, I think, and I, I agree, we should be building smaller units. And building smaller units means smaller units in multifamily projects. And that is the kind of construction that is going to create relatively less expensive options. And because we are in a regional strategy now, we will be part of a system that says, if everybody puts a little bit in, then the people who need it and the people who are, who need a place that they can afford to live will be able to live there. So that, that's kind of, you know, my, my take on that.
Josh, you go first, and then we'll let John come back.
Thanks.
I want to mention two things that we haven't really talked about yet, which is the Inclusionary Zoning Ordinance, which the city of Newton has, which requires developments of, you know, six or more units, create affordable units within that. It's, it's fluctuated, you know, 17 and a half percent, 20%. And we sort of keep tweaking the ordinance as we should to ensure that we get actual units constructed that are affordable, affordable according to, you know, area median income, but nonetheless affordable in and around our community. Though, the Inclusionary Zoning Ordinance is a very important tool that we have. I support that, and I support constantly reviewing that. We're actually undergoing our latest revision right now. Again, to make sure that we actually get those units constructed if and when appropriate, as opposed to a payment in lieu of to the city, which goes to affordable housing as well. But nonetheless, we want construction of those units. And the second thing I want to say is that when we build housing, generally speaking, whether it is high-priced housing, low-priced, mid-range housing, housing of any sort, the more units we construct, although it may not bring the price down, what it does is it puts downward pressure on the overall price of housing. Okay, I do believe in that supply-side theory, which says that the more units of housing you have available, the more, again, it's going to put downward pressure on the overall cost and the overall ability of sellers to demand a higher price for those units.
So, John, just to clarify the way that Josh framed it, do you believe in the law of supply and demand? You just don't think that we can build enough supply to lower prices? Is that what you were saying? I'm not sure.
Yeah, you know, supply and demand in a simplistic sense is a proven thesis in, in, you know, in, in demand and in economics. But there are lots of variables that play into it. You need to take into account all of those other variables in a given equation in order to understand what the result will be in a place like Newton.
What is the solution in Newton to provide the kind of housing that we need?
Yeah. So, look, I'll say, first of all, I just want to say, Cyrus, thank you for reading the report. I appreciate that. And you know I'm always here to talk. I really, I really am, and we've had some good conversations in the past. So, you know, the, we have, we have approved, as I said, a 10%, 11% increase already. That's basically permitted or assumed to be. We have, the MBTA Zoning Act increased another 25% of by-right approvals. That's a lot. That's a, that's a fairly large amount of stock. So, look, I think, you know, part of things is we pass rules. Let's, let's play it out. Let's just see what happens, right? That's, that's part of it, and see if we're really. And see if we're really getting affordability. And I I talked a bit about the affordability. I think, you know, Josh talks about the inclusionary zoning ordinance. That's that's really good. And I've talked a little bit about, you know, true affordable housing, you know, where, you know, nonprofit developers and and that also creates a strata of variety. And again, you know, and I've talked a bit about it. I know it's a difficult thing to do. But, you know, where we can, and if we can influence the sizes of the units, that is a good way that a good tool to create, you know, as Cyrus fairly states, I think, what did you say? You called it less expensive units? I think that's right. So, you know, I I think those are ways that we can do it, and, you know, look, that that's.
Yeah, I just want to add, I mean, I think that, you know, if we look at cases like New Rochelle or in Austin, and New Rochelle, and I've talked about this one before, New Rochelle, they created a master plan that basically facilitated buy right zoning, as we have done with RMBT Communities Act response, but their buy right zoning was designed to actually facilitate the construction of those buildings. And the result is that while housing prices in and around in and around that region went up by something like 25%, the housing prices in New Rochelle went up by something like 1.2%. So that is a real, a real change to the impact, you know, the the affordability of that community. And I also think that, you know, if we are looking towards nonprofit developers, I have worked with nonprofit developers on creating housing. I actually submitted one of the proposals for the Armory. And doing that kind of work is great, but it is also very challenging, and it is increasingly challenging in our national climate because the fundraiser, the financing stack that has to go into that to to come to fruition is just getting harder day by day. The and the reality of our inclusionary zoning program is it is a great program. I actually worked on it, holding the developer's feet to the fire on Northland to ensure that they were you know, actually planning and honestly and fairly and authentically planning to build the affordable housing that they said that they were going to do there. The reality reality of an inclusionary zoning program like that is that you have to have the other 80% of the units if you want to get those 20% created. So I think that these are some of the big picture things we need to be keeping in mind.
And I'm going to let you quickly weigh in, and then I want to move on to some related questions.
Yeah, so as far as the financing, that's an area that I know intimately well as well. My business is an infrastructure finance investment company. That's what we do. And we work using tax credits. Those tax credits are akin to the affordable housing tax credits. In fact, my office is in a building that was financed with them, so very knowledgeable about that. And I and I think that those tax credits are available. There are lots of programs and there are community development options. So there are lots of banks and there are people that want to invest in. So I think there is a market for that. I would also just counter the New Rochelle market data with, I literally checked it this morning, and their prices went up by 7% recently. And, you know, Jamaica, Jamaica Plain, Cambridge, both had affordable housing overlays, Article 80 in Jamaica Plain, affordable housing overlay in 2020 in Cambridge. Both of those were intended to afford to create more affordable housing, and both of those markets in Boston increased 40% over the period and Cambridge 35% over the period. So.
Okay, let me let me ask this question. This is going to be a silent answer from you with a show of hands, okay? Is the housing shortage and crisis that we have in Newton and in our region, our surrounding, is it a five alarm fire, meaning most urgent or one alarm fire somewhere else? So show me how many fingers alarm our fire is in in terms of housing. Josh, you can't quite see your thumb there. Thumbs down? It's four alarm fire, five alarm fire? John?
Sorry, just to understand, Greg, the alarm fire, this means how much we, what was, how much time?
How urgent is the problem? I mean, some of the things that we're all talking about are long, have a long tail.
How many people are affected by it? Sorry, I'm just trying to understand. How many people are affected by it? Well, you know, you know, are are people starving in the streets and that's what we're solving for? I think we should be solving for, you know, homelessness, we should be solving for. That, which we saw, and that is a real issue. That's not, you know, that that's a that's a national issue. That's a bigger issue. When we're talking about housing and affordability in Newton, you know, I think.
Talking about housing availability, not affordability.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's, I think it's a responsibility of a city with means, which I think Newton is, in order to address that. And, you know, and for that, you know, maybe I'd say it's it's a three.
Okay, great. All right. So now, a couple of related questions. Josh, it looked like you were going to say something. No? Okay.
Can I can I add something?
Go ahead, Cyrus.
You know, I I want to kind of just hit on something a little bit here. The the kind of tax credits that John is talking about, there there are tax credits out there for affordable housing projects, and they're great. There's something called Lytech that goes through a one stop process. The one stop is really challenging to do. Its financing stack is not necessarily working out. It takes multiple tries. We also, you know, there's a reality that like the special permit projects that we created, that we are that we are working on, like Northland and Riverside, and those kinds of things coming to fruition. The process that they go through builds cost into the units that get created. There are types of housing, there are types of buildings, and this is where having a background in architecture is very helpful, that are less expensive to build. So I would love to know, you know, if we are, we, people talk about, oh, well, I don't like that these townhouses got created. They're expensive. Townhouses are expensive to build. You have to sprinkle them. They involve a special kind of party wall. What about something like triplexes or triple deckers, which is a housing type that is designed to create affordability and has worked to create affordability? I'd like to know, you know, do we all support that? I personally would support the creation of triple deckers in in the city. We've seen them or triplexes in the city. We've seen, they're historically part of our vernacular architecture. I think it would be great to have them here. They're a low, a less expensive form of housing to build. So I'd like to know if, you know, would we all support something like that?
We we pre-zoned for that in certain areas. Yeah, fully support that.
John, Josh?
Yeah, I think in in the right places, absolutely, you know.
All right. So let me talk about Auburndale, and you can come back to some of these if you want. So tomorrow, the Turtle Lane space goes back up for auction. Do you, what do you think should happen there? What would you want the next owner to know or do with that site? And Josh, I'll.
Well, I got like 10 bucks just burning a hole in my pocket if anyone wants to go in with me.
Go ahead. You're going to buy it for 10 bucks? Go ahead, John.
Well, I think, again, that's right next to, right in Auburndale Center. So prime candidate for VCOD. Why we applied, I believe we did apply to VCOD, do that parcel. I think that was the right move. I think I'm hopeful that a new developer will be able to come in and actually do something with the space. It would be fantastic if we include the art space, if we can include the Armidale Playhouse, if we could bring that back, if we could construct some theater space there in addition to the units of housing, and I wouldn't be opposed to some commercial space or some retail space there as well.
Okay, John, what would you like to see the developer do there? The new developer?
Yeah, I mean, look, there there are so many options. I think, as Josh said, it is in the VCOD, so there's some flexibility there. You know, one of the things I'd really like to know, that place is almost built, and I understood that there are some structural issues with it. You know, what I'd really like to know is, is there any reverse engineering that can actually go in and and use what's been there? And then, you know, preserve it and allow it to stand up, right? And we've seen more complex things done. I mean, if Venice is sinking and people lives in home, live in homes in Venice, maybe there's something they can do with with a slight structural problem there. I I don't know the the.
Cyrus, what are your thoughts?
I'm just going to say one thing. I actually do not know of anywhere in the city where we've zoned for triplexes, but the about about Turtle Lane, Turtle Lane is very personal to me. I grew up doing theater there. What I think I would love to see, and I will offer my a free walkthrough design service to anybody who buys it and would like to under, like, walk through and think about it architecturally. I would love to see us create housing there. I'd also love to see us use, if we can bring a theater back there, that's great. If not, I think what would be really wonderful is to look at the other amazing arts nonprofits that we have in the city and figure out a program by which we could say this space could be offered to you at low or no cost. That's a program that they have in Boston. There where Moak, Mayor's Office of Arts and Culture, makes spaces available to arts nonprofits at low or no cost. It would be great to be able to support them that way. And at the same time, get housing built there. I don't know if that building is going to, that's been built, is going to actually work out. I haven't been inside it, but you know, it would be great to be able to see real housing get built there, either under the special permit or with the VCOD.
Thanks. I'm going to move on in the interest of time. I want to talk about the divisive days that we live in, right? And I'm going to start with you, Josh. We have a polarized city council that you've been sitting on for years.
And we don't.
But.
Sorry, I'm just going to.
Well played, well played.
But the the city has been polarized often about housing, sometimes in other issues. The city council has been polarized. We have a new, a lot of new colleagues joining the council and a lot of new councillors coming in this year, including perhaps two of you here or one of you here for sure. Is there like a hope for, and I, oh, I just wanted, and we have a mayor who's already said which councillors he favors, which is something endorsing city councillors is not something in the years that I've been covering Newton, and it's been a long time. I've seen a mayor, a mayor candidate endorse candidates, which does create some additional divisiveness. Josh is somebody who's been sitting on the city council for a while. Do you see a way to kind of end the divisiveness in the council and to make it more collegial?
I hope so. I will say that my direction, my goal, my MO, since I joined the city council, has been to work with each and every one of my 23 colleagues whenever I can. There are certainly some issues where it's 1212 or, you know, 1113, and that's okay. I think I try to be collegial with every one of my fellow city councillors, and I try to find the issues on which we do agree to work with them on those issues. I'd like to see everyone doing that. I would like to not engage in the, you know, sort of shirts and skins on every single issue or, you know, every particular docket item that comes up before us where everyone looks to the left and right and says, okay, you know, I'm on the skin team, so, you know, how how are we voting this time? I don't like that. I don't appreciate it. I haven't done it. I have, you know, strayed from people with whom I agree many a time. I have joked with my colleague, Lyle Baker, who is one of my favorite colleagues, that if I'm not paying attention or I don't see what's going on in the debate, I wait to see how he votes, so I know to vote the other way. We joke about it. We're good friends. Lyle's a great guy, and there are plenty of things on which we do agree. So I appreciate that type of attitude towards the city council.
So, John, I want to ask you the same question, but let me frame it this way. In in a campaign email you sent out the other day, you wrote, "Over and over, I've heard that people want balance, not extremism." Who are you referring to? Who are the extremists?
Yeah, let me answer the question that Josh answered. The culture is what sets the tone. And when you are in an autocratic situation, that sets a certain tone. My belief is that if Mark were to become the next mayor, and the things I've heard from him is that he's willing to listen to all sides. He has set a tone as the president of the city council that is that is listening to both sides and encouraging debate. I have shown that I'm willing to do that. For example, with Cyrus and Josh, actually, I offered to share information on housing, a subject that we disagree on, not entirely, but, you know, and the means. And I shared some information, and now we're having conversation about that. And I and I think we can, we can do that, and we can continue that. I think it's a demonstration that's really important. And then one of the challenges.
Sorry, you're in a competitive contest, and you pointed to there being extremists and people who favor balance. I'm trying to understand who the extremists are.
Yeah, so people make assumptions about data. Now, I could tell you that's what that's what the that's what the constituents have told me. They said, "We have seen the extremists. We have seen a city council over the last five years," as you said yourself, Greg, "that are divided." And you're either this way or you're that way. And that's what they're fed up with. I can tell you, the MBTA zoning act created a lot of divisiveness in the city. Well, we saw with the the teacher strike, there was a lot of divisiveness in the city. That's extremism that people are fed up with. I'll tell you, the end of the MBT act, the way it was resolved, it was a compromise. It was a compromise struck between two senior councillors that worked and respected each other. Neither one of them got exactly what they wanted, but they worked out. Look, I'm a businessman. What I do for my life is I make deals. And I can tell you, you have to make a deal in which both sides are willing to stay at the table enough to get what they want enough, and then you walk away. And if you're both a little bit dissatisfied at the end, that's probably a really good.
I'm sorry, I still want to go back to the same thing, because I, when you, when you talk about there being extremists, that feels like the national dialogue we have now. You're, everybody's pointing to some other side, and I'm just trying to understand what you meant by that, or maybe it's being misconstrued, you know, misunderstanding what you meant there.
Greg, I'm, I think I answered your question a couple of ways.
Okay, Cyrus, your thoughts on it?
I've heard this come back from people. Maybe they are reflecting the national tone, and they're saying, "We've had enough of the national tone, and we don't want that divisiveness at the local level." We don't want, you know, sort of preconceptions. We don't want assumptions assuming people's intentions. Maybe that, maybe that's what the feedback is. So that's the best I can tell you. I'm I'm not a mind reader, but I appreciate your persistence on the question.
Well, you're the one who wrote it, not me. Go ahead, Cyrus.
Sorry, which question would you like me to respond to?
I'll let you answer any one you want, and I'll ask you one. You can, you want to weigh in on that idea? You know, I, I mean, from my perspective, what are you talking about? You know, what's John talking about? He's talking about you, I would think, and some of the other councillors on the other side, who, because we are in this divided.
Well, Greg, you made an assumption there. See, that's not right. What you did, you just, you just pit me against Cyrus, and and I I didn't say that. No.
If I read that, that's what I thought, and our words matter.
It's, it's my question to respond to. Maybe I'll I'll take a step with this. I think there are a lot of really good intentioned people who are running for city council and who are on the city council now. I maybe I'll combine answers to this question. You you also talked about, you know, kind of how will likely Mayor Laredo work with each other, be be hearing from everybody. I was hurt personally when Mayor Laredo had already endorsed Josh and John without ever having ever spoken to me. Or sorry, not Mayor Laredo, Councilor Laredo. And when he did, when I I wrote to him and said, "I'd like to talk," and we had a call, and he said, "You know, I've already endorsed Josh and John," and I said, "Okay, thanks for chatting." We had a good, we had a nice chat, you know. So I don't know if that necessarily or that that aside, I am committed, really committed to working with any and all city council colleagues who want to get good work done. And I know that we all want to get work done. I, one step that I would like to see us take at the beginning, I don't know exactly the format for this and have to figure it out within Robert's rules and that kind of thing. I'd love to just, all 24 people come together, sit down and say, can we make a little bit, do a little bit of a listening session in front of the public? And say, "What are our shared goals and values? Can we create a set of shared goals and values that then we can all be referring to and be working off of?" I think that would be a great process for us. I also think, or for whoever the city council is. I also think, you know, we have an obligation as, if if I'm lucky enough and work hard enough to be elected, as city leaders, to show the people of Newton and through Newton, the rest of the country, that government can work, and it can work well even when we disagree. And it can work well, perhaps especially when we disagree. Maybe that's where the best results come from. So I I want to be modeling that. And I've said a thousand times, if I disagree with somebody on 95% of the issues, I want to be going into things as a trusted partner, so that on that 5%, we know that we're discussing things in good faith, that we're working together appropriately for for to serve our community. In addition to that, to the to the city council colleagues, I want to be working with the community in that same way. I have a background in community engagement for design that I think that process translates to lots to to everybody, and I want to be listening to the community and leading with community, not just leading, you know, in the city council on predetermined conclusions. The other thing that I I want to say, and, you know, the the word extremism or extremist or whatever, any word that involves that language is is concerning to me. My family is from Iran originally. My dad was born and raised in India. We are Iranian. I am, it's it's scary, honestly, to to hear that kind of language used. I've heard other language used in this campaign that has been scary to me or seen it, you know, posted or what have you, that has been like frustrating and scary to me as a brown person, as a queer person. And I am, you know, regardless of all of that, I will commit to working as well with everybody as possible. I I agree, though, that like words like extremism, references to communities from TV shows from the 50s, like that makes me kind of concerned. Anyway.
Okay, I'm going to let John and Josh weigh in quickly, and then I have one more question before we wrap it up here. So go ahead. John, you want to say something, or Josh?
I mean, when we look at, you know, extremism, I mean, I think we had a, what we did in the No Kings Rally is a peaceful demonstration about the extremism that we've seen at the national level. And that's a good example of this community saying, "We don't want the extremism that we're seeing." And and that's what I see in that point.
Okay. Josh, any thoughts about this?
Yeah, I just want to drive home, you know, the point. I agree with what a lot of John and Cyrus have said, but I made a point earlier about, you know, disagreeing, for example, with councillor Baker on many, many things. I didn't sort of wrap up the point, which is, but he and I worked together really closely on leaf lawyers. We've worked together on a number of legal issues because we both have legal backgrounds. We're both attorneys. And so I find those those areas of agreement with each and every one of my colleagues. And lastly, when I first got on the council eight years ago, I remember that the big knock on the council was that everything was unanimous, and so it was just group think. And so I just want to caution us to say that, you know, one end or the other, whether it's 1212, no one likes it, whether it's 24 to zero, nobody likes it. We need to work together. We need to be collegial. We need to have disagreements. We need to have plenty of areas of agreement. It's all healthy in a democratic institution.
Okay, thank you. I want to move on only because we're running out of time. I want to talk a little bit about environmental sustainability and affordability. So there's a lot of some things that were brought forward for the city, some things that are maybe still be there, like Burdo, but other electrification. How do we balance affordability with sustainability? By affordability, I mean making both both affordable people to live in homes here, if we make regulations that drive up the cost, but also for businesses to locate here. We we make it more expensive to have a building and to to rent an office in Newton versus an office in Waltham that doesn't have the same rules. So, John, I'll let you go first on this one and know you some experience in the sector, so.
Thank you. Yes, as you know, I run a clean energy company or clean energy finance company. I've run it for over a decade. I've dedicated 20 years of my career to fighting climate change because I think of it as a social justice matter. That's. That's why I got into it. I look at the tool of finance combined with impact, and I marry them together in order to drive the ship forward in a very practical sense. The, Newton has a very strong clean energy action plan. I, I think it's great. It's nation-leading. Um, you know, we're doing a great job with our, you know, our solar deployments, and we can improve our tree canopy. Building, installing more trees on particularly on city land is a great way to i- improve our desirability of the neighborhood, our quality of life, carbon sequestration and cooling temperatures. Those are all meaningful ways. Want to talk about project finance for a second, because I think.
So actually, I'd rather talk about legislative efforts that the council may or may not do that would drive up the cost of either living or leasing or owning a building.
Sure. So I, I think you might be referring to the Burdo.
I am, among other things, yes.
But Burdo regulation, so the Burdo regulations for, that is a, those are, those are requirements that say you must measure your energy use, and at some point, we're going to make you change your energy use. And that does add real costs. And I look at the, the people that are affected by that. You've got the large buildings that are sort of on the list, Paul, and three broad groups for me. City.
I'm sorry, what was for you? I didn't hear.
Three, three broad groups.
Okay.
City, nonprofits, and commercial.
Yep.
Now, the city is one place that the city can most directly affect. The nonprofits are gonna have a very difficult time complying. These are organizations that are living on donations, and many of them have old buildings.
Right.
And then commercial as well. It's very hard for a commercial business owner, you know, business owner or a, or a lesser of buildings to also comply and retrofit. Some of these things are very expensive. One of the things that can be done is called a, a private-public partnership, and that is also referred to as off-balance sheet financing. And what happens is, a company comes in, they install the retrofits, whether that's insulation, sensors, lighting, they do it on their cost. So the company comes in, they finance it on their own dime. It costs either the city or the nonprofit or the, or the commercial business owner nothing. And then they share in the savings that are afforded. And what that means is if your energy bill goes down by a hundred dollars, maybe the finance company gets $50 out of, out of the hundred. So then the business owner, the nonprofit, the city, they realize benefit without spending a dollar upfront. That's, those are structures that I'm familiar with, and those are structures that I think we can do a better job of deploying in the city to.
My, my apologies for cutting off, but I'm gonna go to Cyrus. And Cyrus, why do we, why should we bother with these ordinances or whatever that, that protect or, or limit, lower energy use, when we have a federal government that doesn't believe in, in climate warming or any of that stuff? We, I mean, why should Newton do stuff when the, the rest of the country is, um, like, doesn't believe it?
Maybe that's exactly why. Because we are going to need a long-term, sustainable future that, uh, means that we can bring businesses here, that, that it can be attractive to people to live here, that we have a, a place to live at all. And I think that there are smart strategies, like combining historic tax credits with the Burdo efforts and other efforts towards sustainability, that can make these projects and these buildings more affordable for, for people to own and for businesses to be in, and that can also preserve historic architecture in our village centers and our neighborhoods. Um, you know, I think we are, we're blessed in Newton to have an amazing climate activism community and people who are really caring about seeing a more sustainable environment. We had three organizations, um, put out questionnaires, Green Newton, Bike Newton, and, uh, the Newton Conservators, to ask us for our thoughts about these things that involve reviewing the Climate Action Plan, revolved, uh, the, the, that kind of stuff. And, um, you can read, uh, you can read my responses there. I think, I, John, I have, I know that you are a sustainability guy. I haven't seen your responses to those.
I've responded to the conservators and the, and the Green Newton is in its process. I'm actually working.
Josh, your thoughts on this?
Right now. Yeah.
Um, three areas I'd like to mention. Solar, huge supporter of the solar and the solar efforts that the city has put in, both in terms of municipal buildings, but also solar canopies. Um, the tree ordinance, worked very hard on the tree ordinance, um, and Burdo, the big supporter of Burdo. But I want to mention in particular about the tree ordinance in Burdo, that we have to be reasonable. Okay? And so by that, I mean, I don't want to use the tree, I want to use the tree ordinance to preserve trees when it's reasonable. I don't want to use the tree ordinance to prohibit developers from ever constructing housing. Okay? I want to support Burdo, Burdo to help us get a, a grasp on our energy usage and find ways to incentivize, um, decreased energy usage and usage of renewables. But I don't want to use it to overly inflate the price of housing because of the demands we put on homeowners and on our large, uh, excuse me, residential, uh, developments. So I try to be reasonable in my approach to those things. I think it is reasonable to want to not negatively impact the way people live in our community and the way people like to live in our community, while at the same time, making every effort that we can to have a, a safe and sustainable future.
Great. Okay, very good. Thank you. Now, I, we're out of time, Cyrus. I'm sorry. You can put it in your closing statement if you want, but, all right. One moment in one day in history that you could travel back to any time in the world, globe, history and observe, but not change anything, what would day would you pick? Josh Crinsman?
I really appreciate this question. And I will tell you that, uh, my selection is, I want to be in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania on March 4th, 1797, because I want to witness the inauguration of John Adams as president. The inauguration of the second president of the United States was significant. Okay, that was, it was historic. It was the first peaceful transfer of power, uh, between two elected presidents in American history and established a vital precedent for democratic succession. Uh, we elected a new leader. The old leader was sitting there. Uh, and so we talked a little bit today about our, our growing political divisions. I think the orderly transition of power, uh, underscored our nation's commitment to Republican ideals and the rule of law. Um, so I would like to see that continue. That's the moment I would like to witness.
Thank you, John. Your turn. John?
Uh, so I love this question, too. It was a lot of fun. I kept thinking about, you know, the discovery of fire, or being at the time of the Stoics and listening Seneca and the Stoas, maybe the birth of Jesus or Gandhi going to the, picked salt from the ocean.
Pick one, John.
Maybe 1963, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., I Have a Dream Speech. But for me, the, the time that I want to be, and I'm gonna pick two, I'm sorry, is my great grandfather, my great grandfather came over from Ireland, came over on a ship, and he arrived in Canada. And then he rode a bicycle from Canada to New York City. I would have liked to have been there on the day that he arrived. The second person is my father.
No, 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 no. One, gotta follow directions.
All right, all right.
Cyrus, it's yours.
Yeah, actually, I think that mine is Dr. King's I Have a Dream Speech, August 28th, 1963, because it was such a challenging moment. We have a particular image of Dr. King now that is as a hero. He was not seen that way by everybody in our country at the time. I, that, that moment, that fraught, raucous, difficult, challenging moment that came at a moment when we were tearing, this country was being torn apart by itself. Somehow, people came together that day. Somehow, people cared enough for each other as humans that day to prioritize shared values, a view of the future that was abrasive and empathetic, and I would like to, I would have liked to have been there to see it.
Great, thank you. I, I appreciate that. You know, we've been doing this for a while now, and, and I don't think we've ever had a duplicate day that I can remember. So, uh, I appreciate that. And I also appreciate the conversation with all of you today. Uh, I think there's been some efforts out there in the community to maybe paint any one of the candidates as a boogeyman. I'm not sure I saw it today, so I appreciate all of you, uh, participating. You now have 90 seconds to make your final closing argument. Uh, Max Wolf will raise his hand when you've got, you're down to your last 30 seconds, and we'll cut you right off at 90 if you haven't done it. John, you get to go first.
I'm a small business owner, and since we're talking to the business community, I think I can understand, uh, the matters that are most sensitive to you. I'm part of the American story.